The December 12th council meeting will come to order. We begin our meetings -- I'm sorry, January 12th, 2004 council meeting will come to order. We begin our meetings with the pledge of limitations.
I pledge my allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am clerk, which call will call, please?
Commissioner Gillan.
Here.
Commissioner Hostie.
Here.
Commissioner Doolin.
Here.
Commissioner Steinbach here. Mayor Calderon.
Here. Commissioners, we have the approval of the council meeting minutes of December 22nd. Is there motion approved?
So.
There's motions, there are second?
No, second.
And we have a second. Any discussion on motion? There are no discussion on motion. Ma'am clerk, which call will call, please?
Commissioner Gillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Hostie.
Aye.
Commissioner Doolin.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Aye.
Mayor Calderon.
Aye. Before we move on to public comment, as I stated at our December 22nd meeting, there certainly appears to be a renewed interest in folks coming to our regularly scheduled council meetings, which are held on the second, fourth, Monday of each and every month. The regularly scheduled council meetings in the Village of Forest Park are meetings that are held in public. They are not public hearings. There's a distinction between those. Perhaps some of you may have been to either zoning board or planning commission meeting, wherein there's opportunity to take public testimony from members of the public. That not so is the case at regular village council meetings. We give the public an opportunity if they care to place something on the record. We do that during the public comment time. But just as a general housekeeping measure, because we have so many new faces that are joining us at each meeting, we feel that it's important that you know that the time to take care of any significant village matters should occur during regular business hours and dealt with at regular department levels. If there is anyone from the public that wishes to place anything on the record here tonight, you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. I'll time you and I'll bring you to a wrap up when the three minutes has concluded. We may or may not answer your questions this evening. I may assign a staff member to deal with your issue, and that may or may not be dealt with this evening. It may be dealt with sometime after this evening. And lastly, if you aren't going to make any comments, you need to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Bachman, 329 Burkhart Court. And as a follow-up to what the mayor just said, he does handle logistics of how the public interacts at these meetings, but I wanted to discuss and clear up any confusion from last meeting. I wasn't here, but I heard that there was some confusion about things that could and could not be said at the public meeting. So I went back into my personal library.
Mr. Bachman.
For a book that I-
The gentleman will sit back. Mr. Bachman, if you have any comments that you wish to place, you need to address it to the council.
No, I can go anywhere I want. I believe Mr. Durkin approved that the last time I turned around.
You should address your comments to the deans.
I'm addressing it to everyone here. The First Amendment to the Constitution. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedoms of the press, or of the right of the people to easily assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. What that means, explained in this textbook from 1951, this amendment has four important safeguards for the American people. Congress must not set up any religion for the nation. It must not keep you from practicing whatever religion you prefer. Congress cannot stop you from saying, writing, or printing almost anything you like. Don't shout, fire, and run a lighter when you're not one.
You're on the second warning, you're on the second warning of not addressing the village council.
... with other people to talk about anything you like. Final and foremost, Congress cannot keep you from asking your government to correct something that you think is wrong, especially rats, I might point out at this group here today. So remember, these were the rules set out by our forefathers that we follow today. Nothing that he can say can direct with what you want to say in front of the people. We have freedom of speech. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to make any comments? We're out. Let's pick up the microphone.
My name's Karen Oregon. I live at 1215 Moreno. I just wanted to make a comment about the rat problem. I have a two-month-old daughter who, last week, Tuesday night, nine o'clock in the evening, about, I don't know, 20 below however cold it was out, walking out of my garage, turned the corner, and a rat ran right in front of my feet. Two weeks prior, I had called, I had seen two rats, and I called, left a message. There was supposed to be a meeting in our neighborhood about what was being done with the rats, with the rat problem. I never received a call back, so I decided to go into the, in the village hall here and talk to them about what happened. And I was told that there have been no, no one has called. The rat problem is getting better. However, I talked to my neighbors, and they, a couple of people have both said that they have called within the last month, and I have called myself. So I'm just a little concerned about not, the village not being honest with us about what's going on and what really is going on. And I know we have those boxes there out in the alleys, but what is in those boxes? You know, is anyone coming out and changing what's in the boxes? What is actually being done about these rats?
I'll direct you to, you can do so either at the conclusion of this evening's meeting or anytime tomorrow or thereafter. You can see Nancy Hill. Nancy, would you raise your hand there?
I've spoken with Nancy already.
Well, Nancy Hill can definitely answer all those questions that you just sold your hands.
I just want, I mean, when you're, how would you feel? You walk out of your garage, you have a two-month baby in your hand, icy, icy conditions, and you have a rat run across your feet? You know, I mean, just keep that in mind.
Hello, my name is Keith Brogdon. I'm at 1222 Circle Avenue, Forest Park. And as per my last discussion with Mr. Michael Durkin, I was told that the cause of our rat problem, the J.L.G. trucking slash garbage pit that we seemingly are stuck with by our homes, was going to shut down on the 28th of December. I was told that in front of two other residents, that it was his understanding from the group up here. And I'm going to basically say probably, you know, two out of the three of you on this side because it's your department, you should have known about it, you're the mayor, he answers to you. So I'm taking it that, you know, you speak to him. He was told that the 28th, this was going to be shut down. They are still doing business. They are the cause of our problem. I have the pictures now, and I have them printed. I've given a copy to Patrick to show that, yes, there is garbage. And that, now, the other portion of it being that during the strike, they were one of the only companies, though they are union, that was on lists to pick up garbage. And they were bringing that into Forest Park. Thus the rodents, thus every other problem that we seem to be having. And I don't know exactly why it is, if Mr. Durkin was, you know, brought into this by accident to perpetuate a lie, or if by chance it was something else. But I feel that myself and the other residents that have been here that have asked repeatedly for this place to get shut down, let them be a trucking company if they want to be a trucking company, let them be a dump in somebody else's town. We're not modeling ourselves after Melrose Park. We're not modeling ourselves after Bellwood. We're not modeling ourselves after Cicero, even though all the same players are here. Now, the fact is, you know, if we're going to aspire to be a good village, why don't we aspire to one of the nicer villages? You know, I really would like some type of answer, if at all possible. Mr. Durkin wants to meet me afterwards, whatever, to explain why it is. It's now past the 28th of December, and that nothing has been done. And all of us feel that this is the problem. If you bring garbage in, you're going to bring rodents in. And we are stuck with them at our end of town. It's not something that you have to deal with at your home, any of you, because you all live over at Nitside. Maybe if we relocated-
We've got about 10 seconds to wrap up.
Okay, maybe if we relocated them over here, it might, you know, maybe somebody would do something about it. But the fact is, we're stuck with it at our homes, and I would really like to find out why this eyesore of a place is still there and still working. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other member wishing to place any comments on the record? Okay, we're going to move on to communications. We have now, we're going to move on to reports. We've got reports, we have, I think, two reports. One is from the police department. Any questions or comments regarding the police department report? And then additionally, we should have a report from the Department of Health and Safety.
I'd like to, a couple of points to that report. It's the annual report for the Department of Public Health and Safety. The Department of Public Health and Safety has had an exceptional year. With low interest rates, we saw an increase in development and building activity and an increase in property transfers. 2003, there were approximately $7.8 million in private investment in construction and property improvements in the Village of Forest Park. Number of building permits issued increased from 860 in 2002 to 1190 in 2003, a 38 percent increase. We also saw an increase of certificates of compliance applications by approximately 25, or 25 percent over 2002. The ZBA and Planning Commission also saw an increased number of cases. In 2003, the ZBA reviewed 18 cases and the Plan Commission 15 cases. In early 2004, we're already looking forward to a busy year, with the Ultra Foods being under construction, Forest Park Mall already under full swing, the Taxman Project with 7200 Block in Madison about ready to begin, and the Plan Commission is also reviewing projects in Van Buren and the Ed Bruce Building. We expect that the interest rate remaining low, building construction, and property transfer should remain high for the following year. So they're going to be real busy over there, and they've had a really good year this, last year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments regarding the Health and Safety Report? If there are none, we're going to move on to approval of buildings by resolution. Ma'am clerk, which read that into the record.
The resolution by the Council of the Village of Forest Park of County Illinois that we dispense with the reading of the individual bills in as much as each department head has approved and signed bills on the following aggregate amount for their respective departments. Public Affairs Police, $34,475.26. Community Center, $1,395.36. The Accounts and Finance Clerk's Office, $286,403.43. Accounts and Finance Fire Department, $3,069.22. Department of Health and Safety, $4,981.25. Street and Public Improvement, $71,034.36. Public Property, $39,266.86. Water Department, $13,107.57, for a total of $453,733.31.
Is our motion to approve the resolution?
So.
Motion by Commissioner Doolin, is there a second to the motion?
There's a second.
And a second by Commissioner Hostie, any discussion on the motion? There are no discussion, ma'am clerk, which call will call?
Commissioner Gillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Hostie.
Aye.
Commissioner Doolin.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Aye.
Mayor Calderon.
Aye. We have no unfinished business. We're going to move on to new business. The first item is a recommendation to accept the fiscal year-end report for 2003 as presented by our auditors, Mandolffy, Polsky, and Weiss. And we have Burke nearing here this evening to answer any questions. Commissioners, if you do have any questions regarding either the management letter or the audit.
Is Burke going to do the presentation?
Yeah, I think so, sure. Burke, it's all yours.
With regards to the presentation of the audit report, there are five different documents that you have presented because of different requirements of filing with the state and federal governments. And so I'll briefly talk about those five documents, not go into a lot of detail, but be happy to try and answer questions that you may have. The first one I'm going to talk about is the annual financial report. It'll be the thickest setup of information that you have. The financial, annual financial report is as of April 30th, 2003. And on page one of that report is the independent auditor's report. And with regards to our opinion on the financial statements, the fourth paragraph on page one is the opinion paragraph, which talks about what our opinion is of those financial statements. The auditor's report is meant to provide the reader an indication of the type of information presented in the report. It also is any limitations that we may have with regards to the performance of our report. We spell that out within this particular document. We do have one qualification in the report, which relates to detailed records related to the fixed assets of the village are not, there isn't a detailed record of those. And so therefore, we're not able to render an unqualified opinion, which is, would be the highest level of opinion that we could render. We, the issue with regards to fixed asset records, it has been an issue for a number of years now, the village is working to try and address that in the future. With regards to the other documents within this, or the other statements within this document, pages three and four is the balance sheet, which presents the assets and liabilities and fund balances of the village as of April 30th, 2003. It is a document, or it is scheduled that shows information as of a specific date. And so to take a look at the fund equity or fund balances of a particular fund, the best place to look would be from the second line, from the bottom of each column as presented. And the columns are presented, the governmental funds are those funds that provide the services to the village. Proprietary fund are, is your water fund, as well as your parking funds, is what's included in there. And then you have your pension trust fund, as well as the other fixed asset account group, the long-term debt account group of the village. Pages five and six presents information for the year ended April 30th, 2003, presenting information for the governmental funds, showing revenues versus expenditures and the net results thereof. So once again, the third line from the bottom is where you would look for, see results of the operations for the year. Pages seven and eight presents budget actual information, comparing the budget that was passed with the actual results. And then on page nine is the information with regards to the enterprise funds or the proprietary funds, which are your water fund and your parking funds. And then page 10 is information about the firefighters and police pension assets. And then, beginning on page 12, are the notes to the financial statements. And the notes continue through page 41, which present more detailed information about the financial statements that you may not find in the earlier documents. Then starting on page 42 through the end of the document are more detailed information about specific funds or specific information about pensions. For instance, pages 42 through 44 gives you a level of the funding of the IMRF and the police firefighter pension funds. And then further specific information can be found in later pages of the report. That's a overview of the layout of the report. Be happy to answer questions you may have about this document, or I can wait until the end of my presentation if you'd like to rather.
Commissioners, do you have any questions up to this point?
I just have two general questions.
Commissioner Steinbach.
First, is there what was included in our packet? It was stamped that it was a draft budget or a draft audit. Is that, is this the final audit we now have?
This, this is a draft pending approval. It's, I don't know of the procedure that the village is going to employ to finalize, but-
The protocol, Commissioners, is that it won't become final until we've approved it.
Okay, but your, your numbers are not going to change. It's just it's draft because you're pending our approval.
Right.
My second comment is that I'm concerned about the timing of this audit presentation. We're eight months into our fiscal year, and we're just getting the prior year's audit done, which could lend us, it could be a great analytical tool for our previous spending habits, plus give us a handle on our forecasting. I noticed a forecasting of our revenues. We thought we were going to get $1.2 million more in revenues on page seven than we actually got. I think information like that in a more timely manner would be helpful for us when we have our budgeting process and when we have our ongoing discussions about where we sit with our revenue and expenses. So do you have suggestions? I didn't see it addressed in the management letter on how we could remedy this. I know we had to file an extension with the state because we didn't have our audit on time.
Well, with regards to, just from, from my recommendation, and I'll let the village staff address any additional, I think the timeliness issue of the report, the key ingredient of that is the bank reconciliation process, which we've outlined in the management letter, is that in order for us to begin the process, the reconciliations need to be completed so that we understand that, that all of the accounts are in, from management's point of view, in proper order. And we really essentially can't begin the process to effectively do the audit until that process is complete. So my, my first and foremost recommendation for the village would be the bank reconciliations be done on time. That will enable us to come in and perform the audit work earlier so that you can get the report earlier.
Any other questions at this point? We must continue on, Burke.
Okay. The, the other doc, another documents you have is the management letter. And with regards to the management letter, those are our recommendations to the mayor and the members of the Board of Commissioners with regards to improvements that we feel will be beneficial to the village in operations. There are seven recommendations that we've included as, as part B of that management letter. And included within or after each of those recommendations is management's response to those recommendations. And I guess the comment I'll make with regards to the management letter is that it's, it's our opinion that has, that, that management has appropriately responded to those, to those points. We don't have any disagreements with, with how they've responded to them. It's certainly now, then the next step is, is taking the procedures or the tasks necessary to get those, those management responses to in place. So I'm happy to answer the questions at this point.
Commissioners?
I have a question.
Commissioners Steinbach.
In the letters, or the management letter, were any of these, other than the fixed asset recommendation, part of last year's audits, recommendations?
There were several, I think the, and I'm going from record, from memory here, so, but I think the utility billing one was a recommendation that was, was repeated. The bank reconciliation, bank statement reconciliation was a repeated one. And the comprehensive procedure manual was a repeated one as well.
It looks like management has addressed, in their response, most of them, that we've done these things, except for, it appears, number four, our comprehensive financial procedure manual. It talks about all these different things that we're doing in the management's response, but it doesn't actually say that we are putting together this manual and it will be completed by a date. I guess I'm adjusting that to Commissioner Doolin.
Your honor, if I may.
Commissioner John.
A lot of that has to do, Commissioner Steinbach, with some procedures that are in place now, which have to do with our new purchasing policy, for example, and some new safeguards we've put in with department heads regarding their purchasing. I was advised just in the last week or so that we now have a purchase order form that every department head has, and frankly, the administrator and Abby are dealing with the fine points of that form. So, yes, I believe that, in fact, we are answering a lot of those questions. And it's not in a comprehensive manual yet, but a lot of the components are in place and we're, we're getting there.
Do you think we'll have it in place before the next audit so we don't get another repeat? I mean, this, that would be the third year then, and it pops up and-
I'm looking at Abby, and she's shaking her head yes. And I have every reason to believe that yes is a, is a correct answer.
Any other questions so far? Burke?
Okay. The, the other three reports that you have, I'll cover those briefly. One of them is that, is entitled the tax allocation fund. This is required because you have received revenue over $100,000 in that TIF fund, in which, or the tax allocation fund, which then triggers an audit. And basically, you have the tax allocation fund, which is a separate TIF, and then you have the Brown Street TIF fund. Those are both reports that are required to be prepared and, and in accordance with the requirements governing the tax allocation or the tax increment financing laws. I don't know if there's any questions with regards to those reports specifically. Those are, the information, the financial information in that is also in the annual, the village's annual financial report, so it's just excerpted from that document. And then the other document that you have is a single audit, and this is a report that is required because you are in receipt of federal money. And on page five of that report is a schedule of expenditures and federal awards. And for the year ended April 30th, 2003, you received about $2.4 million in federal money on various programs. The largest portion of that is from the EPA with regards to the drinking water revolving loan that you have. And so once you have received and spent over $300,000, that triggers a requirement for the federal audit. And so next year, that changed, that federal requirement has changed to $500,000, depending on where you fall, and it may or may not trigger a single audit, but that is why it's required. With regards to the single audit, page eight talks that there are two findings that we've included. One of them relates to an internal control weakness that we've also talked about in the management letter, but it is a concern for the administration of the, of the federal programs is the, with regards to bank reconciliations. And then in particular to, the second finding is in particular related to the fixed asset record keeping for the, the water revolving loan that you have. There are specific requirements that you need to meet in order to, in order, as a condition of, of that particular loan. And so we're recommending that those procedures be implemented in order to comply with the, with the water revolving loan. I don't see any reason since the, since the loan is relative to what I'll characterize as new or, or isn't of a, so, it isn't far back with regards to the receipt of those monies, that the documentation that you need pulled together should be able to readily available to pull together. But it's a matter of getting the paperwork in order. And so those are the two findings with regards to the single audit. Can I answer any questions?
Commissioners, any, any- Commissioners, any, any other questions?
Your Honor, just a comment, if I may.
Commissioner Gillen.
Your Honor, my comment is basically that we've known, and there are some specific reasons for the bank reconciliation issue, we've known about it. All of the bank reconciliations for every fund, with the exception of the general fund, are current and up to date, as of today. And have been frankly for several months. It's just the general one, where's, I think she's still back about two months on the general one that she's, she's still working on. So, all of those issues concerning bank reconciliations with all of the funds, with the exception of the general, are nonexistent at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Bert. Could you just give us a, a big picture analysis of the change in our financial picture from the year ending to 2002 to 2003? It's sometimes hard to go back and see what exactly happened over the year because we don't, none of your reports like included comparisons of the previous year. So I was wondering if you could just make some comments about, you know, what, what had transpired through that, between the two fiscal years?
Okay, just with regards to some of the information that you can, you'll gather from the financial statements, best, probably the best place to look is on page five of the financial statements, to take a look at what happened with regards to the operating results. And that's basically the third line from the bottom. We take a look at the, with regards to the general fund, which is your primary operating fund of the village. The, the, if you will, there was a deficiency of revenues under expenditures of about $2.4 million. So that was the change in the general fund. Now, there are other funds that the village operates on, the special revenue funds, for instance, include your E911 fund, for instance, your motor fuel tax fund. Some of the tax increment financing funds or certain sections included in there, as there are with regards to debt service funds. Similarly, you can look to see the results of those particular funds. In the debt service fund, I know that there was a, a refunding of a bond issue. Now, what can sometimes happen with a refunding of a bond issue? You can have results that, if you will, look negative, but it might realize an intended result that you have, which is basically to save on interest costs down the road and also to reduce your, your ultimately, your debt service payments. Those could be objectives that you might consider with regards to debt service payments. So those are the results of, if you will, the operating fund. Page nine, then, is the information with regards to the enterprise funds. Same with regards to, same particular location on this statement, third line from the bottom. This is the net result of the water fund as well as the parking revenue funds. And there you were positive of about $320,000 with regards to that. That is, but, as I mentioned, that is both the water fund as well as the, as well as the parking system funds. And so, the water fund's portion of that $300,000 was a positive $140,000 approximately.
So then actually, our parking, we make more money on parking than we do on water?
Yes, you do, yes.
And that, that water revenue includes what we sell to the Riverside Field Water Commission?
Well, the, what that number is, Tony, if I may, what that number is, Terry, is, don't forget that out of the water fund now, we, we fund all of the construction projects that we just didn't repay the, the EPA loan. So that's why that number is $140,000 or $150,000, whatever it is, because it's after all the expenses that we took out. And so, the answer is no, we don't make more money on parking than we do on water.
Any other questions? Bert, did you have anything further to offer?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Steinbach.
In one of these reports, it says that we have to report our GASB findings for the end of this fiscal year. When were, when did this start? When were we told that we needed to do this, this stuff?
I guess the, well, just as a chronological sequence of events, in June of 1999, GASB issued the circular, so it was soon thereafter where, where we had included is, as, if you will, advisory recommendations in the management letter. We've talked informally with staff, as well as in the, just general financial government finance officers association has, has discussed the GASB 34 requirements that are, that are coming along. So I think, you know, in the, in the financial director circles, it's been, it's been something that's been thrown about since, you know, June of 1999.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to accept the, the report.
I'll say.
And the, the audit.
Say it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the hearing report and audit. Is there any further discussion on the motion? There is none, ma'am. Clerk, if you call the rule.
Commissioner Gillen.
Aye.
Commissioner Hostie.
Aye.
Commissioner Doolan.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Aye.
Mayor Calhoun.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioners, we're going to move on to item number two. This proposal is from PTW, and the proposal that we had before is to assist the village in assessing our readiness and implementing GASB 34. This is before us tonight for, for review and approval, if it's all your pleasure.
Your Honor, some comments, if I may.
Commissioner Gillen.
Your Honor, I've spoken with both Matt and Abby and Bert on this subject, and there's no question that it's one that's been hanging out there, I guess, for lack of a better term, for some time. It's important to understand that it's a, it's an extremely complex, unfunded mandate, frankly, from the government, and, and it has been fluid in terms of what's going to be required and things of that sort. We're at a point now where, between the efforts of all of our department heads, who are going to be extremely busy with this, as well as our engineering firm, who is going to be required to literally put a dollar amount on things like our streets and our alleys and our sidewalks and our parkways, and bring all that together, it's going to be an arduous task. There is a need at the end of all of this to compile this information and make sure that it completely complies with all the requirements of what we're calling GASB 34. It's my recommendation that we hire Pandolfi, Topolski and Weiss, because they have the most knowledge of our current system. I asked Bert before the meeting if he was able to provide a ballpark estimate of what those costs were going to be, and his answer was really pretty simple. It depends completely on how much our staff does for them. If, if we wash our hands of the project and say, Bert, you figure it out, then it's going to be in the area of $40,000 to $50,000. That's not our intention. Our intention is to provide Bert and his firm with all of the information that they need as much as possible and have him help us put it together. My estimate is more in the $10,000 range. And Bert will charge us by the hour, and those rates are reflected in, in the memos in our books for the services rendered. So it'd be my recommendation that we, I'd make a motion to accept the proposal from PTW to assist in the GASB 34 compliance.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
A second, Your Honor.
Yeah, we have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I have some questions.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Based on the proposal in front of us, there's two independent sequential phases, assessment and implementation. According to that, to the previous audit, audited statements, it says we have to have this done within three and a half months. Because this has been part of our management letters since whatever, how much of this work have we actually completed since we probably should have been doing it for a while? And my question is, could PTW provide us with a schedule that says, staff, you do this, then we come in, it only costs you this? I, I don't like an open-ended contract like this. I'm very, very uncomfortable with it. I would prefer to see, you know, some more exact numbers, exact requirements. If I might ask Bert the question, how many municipalities have you performed this service for, and what has been your experience on staff involvement and cost, et cetera?
Bert, can you answer those?
Sure, I'd be happy to. With regards to my, our experience with regards to assisting, with regards to the implementation, we've assisted over 40 different governments in the implementation, and we are continuing to assist clients. It, it was a tiered program in that there were, there were phase one governments that those governments with revenues over $100 million were in the first year. You're in the second year of implementation, basically. Those are the governments between $10 million and $100 million in revenue. And then there's yet a third tier, which is going to be the year after next, or in 2005, if you will. And so, with regards to our experience, our experience has been as large as we assisted the state of Illinois in the implementation of GASB 34. And we've also assisted a number of villages even smaller than the Village Forest Park with regards to implementation, some of. And so, those, those governments, obviously, the, the amount of work that was required had, had something to do with the cost as well as the, you know, the set out of the, of the, if you will, the pro forma financial statements under a new format, things of that nature. With regards to the cost, the ranging cost, I, I won't even tell you what the state of Illinois cost, but it, it was a very large number, and we were one, we were part of the, the team that helped there. But for a government this size, my experience has been that what we do, and, and when you, when you talk about assessment and, and implementation, because, you're right, because there's only three and a half, four months left to, to get the job accomplished, you know, those are going to go simultaneously. What typically happens, do an assessment, kind of work on logistics, and then, and then go from there. But one of the things that I guess, with regards to the cost, the majority of the projects we've been working on have been in the $10,000 range versus the $50,000 range. And I won't say that there are some governments or villages your size that, that the fee has gotten $50,000, but it was to the approach where we had to do a significant amount of, of planning for the, you know, putting schedules together and things of, of that nature. If this engagement can be limited to the standpoint where we can meet with village staff and they put together the schedules that are required, then we're, you know, we're in the ballpark of the $10,000. But if, you know, at some point, you know, that, that increases, then, you know, obviously, if we need to come in and do more, then certainly that, that cost goes from there.
So you could actually put together a schedule that, or a plan that says, okay, Village of Forest Park, you provide us with this, all these different things, and then it will only cost you X dollars for us to help you finish it?
If, yeah, we, we certainly could, if you will, put, you know, give you the, the various tiers of what potentially it would cost. Obviously, you can't, sitting here today, I can't, you know, say it's definitely going to be, be that.
No, I understand that, but at least it would give us an idea of what is going to be expected from staff, which, you know, has to be worked into their, their daily schedule and operations. And it's a trade-off, right? We do it, or it costs more money.
If I may.
Commissioner Gillen.
Thank you. Prior to, prior to engaging Bert and, and their firm to do this, to do this work, we've had many conversations with Bert and his firm as it relates to GASB 34. And I believe that we already know what's going to be expected of the village. Abby has that information, and we're prepared to do that. You know, the fact of the matter is that that's going to be our role then, to make sure that all of our respective department heads do their share and then move forward. We don't have any choice at all whether or not we're going to employ a firm to do it. And, you know, I guess I'd be happy to, to put a cap on, you know, make the motion so that it has a not to exceed number, but I really, I mean, if it does exceed it, we're going to have to pay it. It's going to be because of some reason that we can't control tonight. You know, I think Bert has given myself and the council now his best estimate of what it will cost, based on the things that he knows we already prepare and are prepared for.
Mayor? Commissioner Doolan?
Bert, I have, I guess, one question, just reading kind of your, your prepared statement that you gave to us. It does give an overview, and I'm assuming if I read this properly, this is, this is a, a requirement for, really a change in the way we municipal governments, is this, this is limited to municipal governments, I'll assume, or state governments, local?
State and local.
State and local, okay. And so, part of what you're going to provide for us is showing us how to meet these requirements and change, implement some changes in the way that we do accounting and recording and things of that nature?
Yes.
Okay. And as our independent auditor, do you feel in any way, shape or form that, that getting involved with setting up these new programs, these new accounting procedures, is in any way a conflict of interest?
Well, it's, it's a good question. With regards to the, the work that we will be doing, we won't be, if you will, participating in, in management's, you know, we will have no, if you will, management involvement. So for instance, we might, we might offer suggestions about options that management can choose to, in, in implementing, or options that they can choose in maintaining the records. We're not going to be involved in, in, if you will, actually preparing the records or, or doing the work that's necessary to assign values, for instance, to, to assets. One of the biggest parts of this is coming up with a value of all your fixed assets, so that's certainly going to be outside of our, now, we may comment to the village that you haven't done enough work here. We can't, you know, this, you say that table is worth a million dollars. We have a, have a hard time believing it's worth a million dollars. We need to see something that supports that. So we, you know, it, it's a very interactive process where, you know, they may bounce questions off us as to that process, but the, setting the values and establishing the procedures, that is up to management to do. We're, if you will, reviewing those procedures and, and offering advice along the way.
Okay, but at some point, you'll have to, in, in 2004, you'll have to provide another, a new audited financial statement for, for '04, which will be, you'll kind of be checking the work of the processes that you put into place. Is that, is that a fair summary?
Well, we're, we're not going to be putting any processes into place. We're going to be, we're going to be, if you will, acting as a sounding board to the village with, as, as village management is putting processes in place. So there may be questions that they may have about the type of, the, the type of information that they may need to gather, you know, what from our experience has been good places to get that type of data that they may use to value assets, for instance. What are some of the technical requirements of the GASB? I'm, I'm not sure if, if all the members of the village staff have read GASB 34 or not, and I wouldn't necessarily expect them to, but, you know, they might ask us questions about, well, what, you know, what, what's a requirement of GASB, and that's the type of information we would be providing.
Can you, can you provide us any type of a history? You said you did approximately, or PTW has done approximately 40 of these GASB assessments, if that's a, if that's improper terminology. How many of those do you prepare audited financial statements for as well?
Nearly all of those. Not all of them, but nearly all of them.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Can we have a motion, ma'am clerk, if we?
Yes, Your Honor.
To accept a proposal from PTW?
And a second.
And we have a second. And if there is no further discussion, ma'am clerk, you'll call for a roll call.
Commissioner Gillen.
Aye.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillon?
No.
Commissioner Steinbach?
No.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That motion is carrying and passed. Well, then we'll move on to agenda item number three. We have a, there was a, a public bid opening for renovations of the lower-level bathrooms here at Village Hall to bring them into ADA compliance. I believe that the clerk attended that public bid opening, and the, you know, the most responsible bidder is Ryan Construction. And so we have the proposal before us tonight to take action if it's all your pleasure to, to accept the bid from Ryan Construction.
I'd like to make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
A second, Your Honor.
Yeah, we've got a second on the motion. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to say a few things since that was my department. The village was approached by the progress center about four years ago. They did an assessment of various municipal buildings in town, and when they, they had two complaints about Village Hall. One was the handicapped parking stall, and one was the lower-level bathrooms. So the parking stall was handled as part of a fifty-fifty sidewalk program four years ago, and we had promised to start the completion of the bathrooms at that time. At that same time, a contractor who was doing work around Village Hall submitted a proposal of, of approximately seventeen thousand dollars. As you can see, the amount that we budgeted was originally eighteen thousand five hundred, and Ryan Construction is considerably higher. So I just wanted to explain how the finances of this project were going to be undertaken. First, the reason that there was such a discrepancy in the eighteen-five and the thirty thousand based on Director Hyder's responses were that the contractor actually did not understand the guidelines for compliance. When they presented their initial quote, Forest Park had not passed a prevailing wage ordinance, and the contractor did not take prevailing wages into account when he did his calculations. The price of materials for ADA-approved fixtures has increased significantly, and now we will be meeting the standard of the ADA guidelines and remodeling for the long term instead of a Band-Aid approach. So while we do have the eighteen thousand five hundred dollars as the line item, we also have in that same account approximately thirty thousand dollars left for repairs, maintenance, and we can use the balance of that to complete, we can use those funds to complete the balance of this project.
Anything further, Commissioner?
Well, just, just to kind of pull on your heartstrings, last month, a gentleman who was handicapped in a wheelchair was using our bathroom and got stuck in our bathroom and was yelling for help, and our director of the building department had to go and help that person out of the bathroom. So I, I really think it's important that we don't have our residents undertake a form of embarrassment like that. So I just, I'm trying, I'm pleading my case for this bathroom.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, just want to clear, is your, your motion to accept the base bid from Ryan Construction and also alternate number two?
And what and two?
Okay. We're taking alternates one and two?
Right. Alternate one is the upgraded toilet partition, so it's graffiti-free, and then we also needed some ventilation improvement.
Okay, so we're, your motion is to accept the base bid plus alternate one plus alternate number two?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Here, no, ma'am clerk, which call a roll call.
Commissioner Gillen.
Aye.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillon?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
And motion carries.
Motion carries and is passed. We're going to move on to agenda item number four. It's a recommendation, commissioners, that we have before us in ordinance four, as a result of a recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, a petition from the park district of Forest Park to rezone a certain portion of property, kind of bordered in between Swayne's Avenue and Lathrip on about the seven hundred block. I think it's all got by random in your, in your board books from Nancy Hill. It is, is it so your pleasure to approve the ordinance this evening?
I would make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
A second, Your Honor.
And we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here, no discussion, ma'am clerk, which call a roll call.
Commissioner Gillen.
Aye.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillon?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
Your Honor, this O dash one dash zero four.
Okay, commissioners, we're going to move on to agenda item number five. This is a proposed ordinance, authorizing execution of an agreement to enter into a sales tax rebate agreement with NWC Harlem Washington LLC. And I think, I think Matt advised me that he has spoken individually to you commissioners regarding this proposed economic incentive agreement. We also had Phil McKenna from Kane McKenna and Associates take an independent look at this, as we have done in the past with any of our economic incentive agreements. So this is before us tonight, and it's all your pleasure to adopt the ordinance, and now would be the time to make a motion.
So, sorry. Let's get the motion on the floor.
We're making a motion. Commissioner Dillon, is there a second to that motion?
A second, Your Honor.
All right, we got a second. Commissioner Steinbach?
I just wanted to clarify, in the sales tax rebate agreement, it says it's leasing the property to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. In, in Matt's email, he also talked about CBS Pharmacy. So now, do we definitely have a commitment then? I mean, this only works for Bed Bath &amp; Beyond?
Yes, Commissioner, this agreement would be part and parcel to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond as intended.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion?
One quick question there. Commissioner Dillon? Um, in, I mean, I was contacted via email by the village administrator, and my only response was, it did seem as though this type of an agreement has become more the norm than it is the exception. And they initially, or the developer, and I'll assume is, are we calling Bed Bath &amp; Beyond the developer, or is the developer the owner of the property?
Owner.
The owner. So how, how does that work? So is the money going to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, or the owner of the property?
No, that actually goes to the developer. Okay. The agreement is with, is with NWC Harlem Washington LLC.
Okay. And, you know, and again, maybe if you can guide me through, because my only comment was, and I'm directing this to the village administrator, my only comment was, you know, was this something that we should try to negotiate, or they just asked, you know, what's, what's the standard? I mean, they asked for four hundred, and we just, you know, as long as the numbers, the numbers play out in the long run, we go with it? Or is there any negotiating on this number, or?
Typically, we do, actually, every, every economic development agreement I've been a part of in the last eight years, we, we've always negotiated. I mean, the numbers that we settle at, when it comes down here to get to the council level, that's after negotiations have taken place. You know, we've never, never really settled on first numbers at the developers.
Okay, so when that was the case on this, because I, I thought that the initial request was four hundred. What was the original request?
Mayor, I can clarify that. The original request came in based on numbers of the pro forma working with the landlord, came in at five hundred thousand with renovation cost, I think somewhere about one point four million that the landlord had estimated. They came back with increased numbers in the renovation of about a hundred and forty thousand, actually, I think about a hundred and sixty thousand, and they have lowered their request from five hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. So there was some negotiation that did take place, reducing the amount asked for from five hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. So I only kind of did look at both numbers and reasoned that the gap of five hundred thousand would have allowed the village to offer an economic incentive agreement based on the financial pro forma that was submitted, but we ended up lowering that number to four hundred thousand for a fifty-fifty split, as you can see, over thirteen years with a maximum cap. So whichever becomes first.
Commissioner Gillen?
I just wanted to add that because I have been a part of several of these in the past, this one is a bit different in that, I know it sounds strange, and I don't even like to put it this way, but they're only asking for fifty-fifty. Generally, these things are set up in such a way that they get like eighty percent the first couple of years because they're trying to recoup their initial investment. So a fifty-fifty deal right from the first day is, is reasonable and not quite the ordinary model that I see.
I have another question.
Commissioner Steinbach?
In your memo, ma'am, it says a total of three hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars of new sales tax money. Is that our portion, or is that the total portion of sales tax money? For change.
That would be village money, the three hundred and seventy-three thousand through the first, to two thousand and sixteen, would be new money to the village that would receive.
So that's what they'll have throughout the twelve-year period?
That's what they're estimating. Based on the analysis by Kane McKenna. And that's just looking at, so look at the cumulative share of sales tax collected.
Right, that's why it looks like it's, so they're really going to collect more than accumulated, generally, the numbers, two, six hundred, seven hundred and forty thousand?
Because that's after the split. So they'll actually...
So they'll have more than that, actually? This isn't our portion?
That's our portion, split fifty-fifty.
What portion is it?
One percent.
One percent.
More than four hundred?
Yeah, that's the key, yeah.
No, I understand that. I just couldn't figure out really how they were comping the entire sales tax.
Our portion, too.
Commissioner Hostie?
I just want to comment that as much as I hate the corporate blackmail, there seems to be more of the par for the course than the exception these days between the agreements from Walmarts and all these other big-box retailers. It will be a, a very nice improvement to see something besides what's been there in the past, the A and P, the Pep Boys, the Oak Park Library, to actually have a reputable chain like Bed Bath &amp; Beyond as a corner to the Harlem district that needs to be, you know, worked on all the way from one end of town to the other. Be a good place to start working from.
Any other, any other discussion on the motion? Here, no further discussion, ma'am clerk, which call for the roll call.
Commissioner Gillen.
Aye.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillon?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
Okay, commissioners, we're going to move on to agenda item number six. It's a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus village-owned real property. This is regarding Altonheim. I, I think that most of you, I think that all of you really should have pretty much some background information regarding this. This is a certain portion of Seabuilding, and when the original deal was put together, kind of an imaginary line was drawn to separate the property. And on a go-forward basis, you know, they've come back to us and said, why don't we, you know, rethink this and, and, and sell an additional portion of Seabuilding, which kind of takes it to a point where, you know, there was a stairwell originally designed, and makes a cleaner cut in the overall delineation of that. So, you know, it's our recommendation that we do sell it to Altonheim, and that way the buildings can be properly, I'm going to say bifurcated, and then we can, you know, get our, most of our utilities, I think, are already shut off, but I don't know if each of you have taken the time to read through this agreement. In addition to the price that we would collect from Altonheim, then there, they'll, you know, forego, you know, what they're saying are some utility costs that we should have incurred, but that's all part of this resolution. So what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Hostie, is there a second?
A second.
And we've got a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here, no discussion, ma'am clerk, which call a roll call.
Commissioner Gillen.
Aye.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillon?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon?
Aye.
So this R dash two dash zero four.
Mayor Calderon, this is the first step of a two-step process. This resolution will then be published, and we will have an actual contract or we anticipate getting one for the actual sale to Altonheim at the next meeting. And it's still being worked out with respect to certain rights of first refusal, easement language. But if you recall, when we did the taxman sale, we passed both of these at the same meeting because we did in fact have a contract. We don't have that ready for this meeting, but there's a ten-day lag that the resolution has to be published, so we split this into two parts and expect to have the contract back before the council at its next meeting.
Thank you. We'll then move on to agenda item number seven, which is a recommendation from the Traffic and Safety Commission regarding two issues that they have taken under consideration. One is from a petitioner at seventy-two twenty-three Jackson, who was, you know, concerned about the traffic in the alley. And the committee has a recommendation to close off access to Harlem Avenue. I'm not positive how that would be affected. This is the east-west alley just north of Jackson Boulevard.
Isn't Harlem and I got street, wouldn't we have to get their permission to, that's their curb, right, their right-of-way? We'd have to talk to them about doing that?
Well, maybe yes and maybe no. I mean, there's no curb there now. I suppose if we were talking about installing a curb, we may have to, but there's probably some other mechanisms that could be used to, you know, keep traffic from, from turning down that, that alleyway here, other than...
Is there a sign up there now that says no through traffic?
I'm, I'm still confused about how they get exactly from Ringo to Harlem. I know there's that, there's about a hundred and fifty-foot alley. Is that what they're talking about, Bob? So it's not really Ringo, it's from Elgin.
No, it's from Harlem.
No, it's from Harlem to Ringo.
The alley goes all the way to Harlem.
I see, so they're turning off of Harlem.
Shoots to Ringo's, come down to Jackson.
I'm not sure if there's an alley, because I've never come off of Harlem.
Well, there definitely is an alley.
There's an alley that goes right into one of my... There's, there's an alley that goes right into our, my, my-
I don't know if there's any sign.
Yeah. The alley's there.
I guess, uh-
While the, the committee's got two recommendations, one is to either close it off, or, you know, that's not acceptable to, uh, to have speed bumps installed in the alley.
Your Honor, may I recommend we take those in reverse order and see the effectiveness? Put in the speed bump, see if the problem gets better, if it gets, if it, that doesn't help it.
Whatever is your pleasure.
Could there possibly be a third alternative? Is, now, I'm not sure about traffic or moving violations, but if there's a no-through street, or no-through something sign up there, if they're cutting through like that, isn't that a moving violation, that we could actually ticket them and get them to stop? Because I would think that it's always the same people who are doing this, because they would be the people who know about the alley and where it comes out. So could we, maybe as a first step, put a police officer there, because it's gotta be during rush hour, that this happens most of the time. And I'm sure, can they give out those kinds of tickets? Can we do something like that, rather, you know, to see if it has an effect?
See, I suppose that we could, but, uh, you know, when you talk to these folks, because they're not alone, you'd be surprised, a number of people, I feel, they have excessive, uh, warranted traffic in their alleys, it's-
I lived 18 years at the end of that alley where they're turning, and there has been times when people have been up on my lawn and, and sidewalk there, so I'm, I'm aware of, you know, the, the traffic that flies down that alley.
Your Honor, my suggestion would be for the combo, let's try for some enforcement, throw a few speed bumps in and see how that works.
Yeah, just, I'm trying to be realistic about it.
Sure, sure, I understand.
You know, we don't want, you know, you put a sign up there and, and, uh, you know, we don't want to end up coming back and tarnishing the police department, because they weren't able to keep somebody stationed there, uh, you know, a sufficient amount of time to issue enough tickets. We certainly could direct the police department to, uh, you know, to, to keep an extra eye over there, but, uh, you know, something tells me that that's not gonna achieve the desired results.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I agree with that. I mean, the enforcement of that is gonna be extremely difficult. And the, the alley dumping out or being accessed off of Harlem, or accessed off of Harlem is, is really an ill-conceived alley at that point. Um, that, you know, that alley comes out, you know, literally 120 feet before the stoplight. Um, I don't think that this problem is gonna change. And, and the recommendation is based on, you know, several members of the committee actually went out there and sat out there, um, and, and determined that the problem was, because there was talk about the do-not-enter signs, and then you got enforcement issues, and, um, it, the, the problem doesn't appear is going to stop unless that alley is closed off. Um, and it just, it, it's a poor alley to begin with. I mean, it's, it's an alley that only the residents on the 7200 to 7219 block of Elgin use. Um, when you get to that alley, you, it, it's virtually impossible to take a left-hand turn, so all you can do is take a right-hand turn. But really, at that point, you might as well, you know, go around, and it's actually safer to go down Elgin to Adams, and then, and then across, and back out into Harlem. So, uh, you know, really closing it off, it, it really was based on some, on, on observation. And it's really the root of the problem, is, is, is that alley has access to Harlem.
Why don't we check with the homeowners on the 7200 block of Jackson, and if there's no objection, why don't we have Public Works install a couple, uh, uh, yellow posts in the ground, uh, you know, rather than working towards the installation of a curb? Um, and then, you know, we could measure, you know, measure that progress over time, effectively shutting off entrance to the alley of Harlem, which is where it sounds like the problem is originating.
The only thing I'd suggest, I have no problem closing it, but I know three years ago, we changed the direction of an alley. I would check with the people who live on the Harlem and Elgin block, in that block also. We changed the direction of an alley, and somebody couldn't make the turn into their, their garage, because the way the light poles lined up from the angle that we forced them to come from, the opposite direction. If we're gonna survey the block, I'd just suggest not just the Jackson side, to do the Elgin and Marango, or the Elgin Harlem residents also in that block. You'll probably find it's not a problem, but I would double-check, so it doesn't come back to be a problem later.
Well, what's your pleasure?
I'd shut it down after a survey, would be my pleasure.
You know, if it seems as though, I mean, if they surveyed it, and, and there's, you know, the traffic's excessive, it, it sounds like the best remedy would be to, to close off.
It was a definitive recommendation, so, um, I, I, I would, I don't know if, I mean, if we got a motion out there, but I would move to, to accept the recommend, the initial recommendation of closing off access to that alley by the Traffic and Safety Committee. So make that formal motion.
Do you want to put that pending, survey of the neighbors?
Uh, you know, I mean, you're gonna survey them.
The neighbors brought it forth.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's-
A second.
Okay. All right, so you got a motion, any discussion on that motion? Here are no discussion, Madam Clerk, call for the vote call.
Commissioner Doolin.
Aye.
Commissioner Hostie.
Aye.
Commissioner Doolin.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Aye.
Mayor Calderon.
Aye.
And then, uh, we have a second, um, issue from the Traffic and Safety Commission, and that was in regards to a petitioner, uh, who wanted to, I think, make, uh, Elgin Avenue, uh, just south of Roosevelt Road, two-way to the alley. But their recommendation is, is not, not to make that two-way, to leave it as is, as I'm reading this. And maybe try and get Walgreens to, uh, move their exit. So certainly, I guess we could attempt to do that. So you see, see any difficulty in denying the, the, your request?
And just real quick, I, I don't, and part of the problem is, is that, I mean, it's been looked at, and to turn it into a two-way street, um, we'd be losing five or six public parking spaces on that small block, and we're, we're, we're dying for public parking down there. And, uh, there just isn't enough room on that street to make it two-way and keep that parking.
And eliminate all the parking next to RDL, if you made it two-way.
That's exactly what I said.
When I was with the Traffic and Safety Committee the last four years, this one came up a number of times. But it seems like a logical idea to see if you could get Walgreens to put an exit before Elgin for those people desiring to head north instead of south. It would reduce the amount of traffic, people going towards 13th Street. If you can get Walgreens to do a curb cut and put an arrow on the pavement, go out to Roosevelt Road.
Get out onto Roosevelt Road.
Yeah, because a lot of people, what they do is either, and we monitored a couple of years ago, is they either just shoot down to 13th Street, and I do mean shoot, or they go for the alley, which is a do-not-drive-through alley, and pop out by the whitehead. Or they just do the third illegal option, and just take a right anyway. So if you, if we could have the administration talk to Walgreens, it seems like it'd be a very logical-
Well, we may have to put a police officer over there, too. Chief, you're gonna be on the squad, Charlie.
You'd never find a cop when you walk in.
Well, it sounds like we should just go along with the recommendation from Traffic and Safety that, you know, that we not take any action in terms of making it a two-way street, certainly action to that.
Do we want to advise the administrator to speak to the Walgreens management?
It's so noted, we'll do that. Okay, we're gonna move on then to, uh, item number eight is a proclamation, Madam Clerk, would you read that into the record, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor's proclamation, Martin Luther King Day 2004. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to the advancement of civil rights in public service, and whereas citizens of Illinois and across the country honor Dr. King's legacy each year in January, and whereas Dr. King recognized that everybody can be great, because everybody can serve, and during his lifetime encouraged all Americans to serve their neighbors and their communities, and whereas Martin Luther King Day focuses on bringing people together and breaking down the barriers that have divided us as a nation, and whereas thousands of Illinois residents will commemorate the significance of Martin Luther King Day by performing community service that benefits communities and neighborhoods and provides a fitting memorial to the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Therefore, I, Anthony T. Calderon, Mayor of the Village of Forest Park, County of Cook, State of Illinois, hereby proclaim January 19, 2004, as Martin Luther King Day in Illinois, and urge citizens to recognize it as a day of service throughout Illinois, as well as a day to honor this profound and influential civil rights leader.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then would you follow it up with the Agenda Item Number Nine, uh, which is another proclamation, would you read that into the record, please?
National Mentoring Month 2004. Whereas across our great nation, many Americans are responding to the call to service by mentoring a child in need. By offering love, guidance, and encouragement, mentors put hope in children's hearts and help ensure that young people realize their full potential. And whereas volunteers provide friendship and support to young people who are facing challenging situations, and serve as positive role models to help instill important values, goals, and skills. And whereas mentors help young Americans build confidence, gain knowledge, and develop the character necessary to make the right choices and achieve their dreams. And whereas during these extraordinary times, we are experiencing a growing culture of service, citizenship, and compassion in our country, with many Americans sacrificing for causes greater than self, and you will find many dedicated individuals are getting involved in mentoring through faith-based and community organizations, corporate activities, school-based programs, and many other outlets for kindness. By dedicating their time and their talents to offer a child a quality relationship with a caring adult, mentors strengthen our families and our community. And whereas many folks can point to individuals who influenced their lives and help to shape them into who they are today, whether they were teachers, coaches, relatives, clergy, or other community leaders, these positive role models have been critical to our healthy development and help to instill purpose in our lives. And whereas statistics show that at-risk children with mentors demonstrate improved academic performance, and are less likely to be involved in destructive activities such as drugs, alcohol, and violence. And whereas too many children are growing up without enough support and guidance in their lives, and I encourage our residents to become a mentor and change the life of a child. Together, we can reaffirm the promise of America and point the way to a brighter future for all of the children in our community. Now therefore, I, Anthony T. Calderon, Mayor of the Village of Forest Park, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim January 2004 as National Mentoring Month, and call upon the citizens of our great village to recognize the importance of being role models and look for mentoring opportunities.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I would also just add to this, um, last Thursday, uh, I was invited to participate in an alumni day at, uh, the Forest Park Middle School. And so myself, along with Randy Tinder and Art Jones, who's not an alumni in terms of a student, but alumni in terms of a former superintendent of the school, but, uh, most gratifying and most significantly was, uh, school board member Glenn Garish invited, I think we had 12 college students that were alumni of middle school. And, and those students took the time to come to the middle school, and they were assigned different classrooms, wherein they went to the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders into the classroom and, and interacted with them on, you know, the value of seeking a quality education and the importance of education, and particularly attending college. It turned out to be a very, very, uh, good morning, and that was capped off with an assembly in their cafeteria with all of the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, at which time a copy of this proclamation was presented to those 12 students, along with a certificate thanking them for their participation in, in this first alumni day here at the Forest Park Middle School. So it really was a, a great time, and I, I hope that the school district continues to do that, uh, in the years ahead. We're gonna move on to Administrator's Report, ma'am, do you have anything for us? We'll move on to Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Doolin.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hostie?
I've already gave mine, Your Honor, thank you. At the point with the department.
Okay, good.
I got it in early.
All right, you got it in early, okay. Commissioner Doolin?
One quick item, uh, I just wanted to give, uh, not that, actually, several members of the council have actually served in the position that I serve in, as Commissioner Streets and Public Improvements, but just to give everybody a general idea, as well as maybe even the public, you know, what, what does it cost to remove snow from a street? And I had our director, Bob Kutek, you know, just put up, put together a grand total of just salary for employees to plow streets, plow and salt, and from midnight, Sunday, January 4th until 7:00 a.m., Monday, Jan, uh, January 5th, uh, we incurred salaries for employee in the, in the, in the form of overtime, in excess of $6,200, so. Um, and that, really, I guess, in the, in the scope of things, I mean, you've had a couple up here, but significantly larger snowstorms where snow removal and hauling was required, and, uh, just to give people a basic idea of what it takes, you know, again, getting back to that whole budget issue and what it costs to operate a village, uh, that doesn't include salt, and doesn't include any of the other ancillary items, just salaries along, well, over $6,200, so, um, just a point of, point of information.
It's not inexpensive.
Commissioner, that was for all the personnel down?
Yeah, that's, that's all, a combination of, of public property as well as streets, or what we refer to as public works.
You started with the wear and tear of the vehicles, the cost of the salt.
Again, salary alone, six, over $6,200 for a little over 24-hour period. Thank you.
Commissioner Steinbach? Okay, that concludes our business, Commissioners. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So do I.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you call?
Commissioner Gillen.
Aye.
Commissioner Doolin.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Aye.
Mayor Calderon.
Aye.
You stand in adjourn.